The meeting in order, please rise for the invocation led by Mr. Benton, followed by the pledge led by Mr. McLaughlin.
Bow your heads with me. Lord, thank you for the day. Thank you for every day you bless us with, and thank you for the abilities to come together and do the discussions of the county. Please guide us, lead us, and let us do your glory. In your name I pray. Amen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Welcome to April Fool's Day Eve. First item is approval of the agenda. There are no proposed additions or to or deletions from the agenda.
So we need to set our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, call the question.
Could I have the floor computer, please? First item is approval of your consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following. Number one is approval of minutes for your February 28th and March 7th board meetings. Second is approval, appointment of Gregory Letts to the Rappahannock EMS Council for an unexpired term that closes on April 30th, 2018. Number three is approval of contract for air specialists of Virginia. This is for the vehicle exhaust removal systems for our fire stations at the low bid amount of $631,750. Next is approval of a contract renewal to Cherry Baker LLP for auditing services. This is the third renewal year of a four-year renewable contract. And fifth is a resolution commending Dr. David Sam of Germana Community College on the occasion of his retirement. That is your consent agenda for the...
Would anybody like to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Call the question.
Seven, yes.
Public presentations, Amy. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir, we do not.
Is there anyone that's not signed up that would like to speak at this time? Close out public presentations.
Brings us to board reports, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Skinner, anything? Dr. Trampy?
No report.
Mr. Benton?
No report.
Mr. Jakubowski?
None this evening.
Mr. Sebula?
Just a brief comment on, for the people out there listening, the bridge at Fairview Road is looking like it's going to be approximately four more weeks to complete, and I, please, I urge all of you who use that route to pay particular attention to the signs. We've had a couple of serious accidents by people ignoring the signs and trying to proceed on a closed road, and fortunately, nobody's been seriously hurt, and I just want to prevent any serious injury. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. Chair, based on the last couple of meetings we had, a lot of members of the public made different comments, but one of the recurred several times is complaining about the 3:00 or 4:30 start time. And again, I brought this up a couple of times in the past, and I'd like us to bring this up for discussion again, whether it's tonight or in the next following meeting, about starting the 6:00 start times for both of our meetings during the month, because right now, and it was said by several members, that fighting the traffic down 95, they can't get here for the 3:30 discussions, and they feel like they miss out on some of the public comment period. So, I mean, I would make a motion now to extend the first meeting of the month to 6:00 as the second meeting, and I'll make the motion.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I remember right, when the discussion was, was people can't make it to the 4:30 start, but they can make it to 6:00 start. And if I recall, we're having public comments at both those meetings, whether it starts at 4:30 or not. Those that can make it at 6:00, doesn't matter whether it starts, they still have the opportunity to start their meeting at, we start our meeting at 4:30, and if they don't get there in that time, and they say they can get it to the 6:00 meeting, then they still have an opportunity to present that to them. So I don't think that we're not, we're not denying anybody in this case the right to speak, and I would never do that. But my thing is, yeah, those that come at, some people can't make it at 4:30, but they can make it at 6:00, and that's by their own, you know, statement of fact there that they can make it. So what'll incur, well, a little bit more time during our 6:00 presentation, 6:30 presentation, whatever it may be, 6:15, that more people speak than they would at the 4:30 start. But, you know, I just think that we have two sessions. We're giving people two times to speak, of course, only once on the subject they want to. And I don't think it's a good idea right now, especially during budget. If you want to discuss this later on in the year and stuff of that nature, I'd really like to see people who can't make it to 6:00, what are we going to do? Keep pushing it back and back and back? I don't think that's fair to everybody, but I think we're giving them two opportunities. Those that can't make it for the 4:30 start certainly can make it for the 6:15 or 6:30 presentation. That's, so I don't think it's a good idea to go on with that.
All right, Mr. Sebula?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would have to state that I have had a lot of feedback when we moved the meeting from 3:00 until 4:30. The people, my constituency liked the meeting at 3:00. I have had a lot of people since that time state that they don't like to drive after dark. Now, realize we're daylight savings time now, but this is a problem, and I have a lot of people in the rural areas that just do not want to drive those back roads in the dark. They appreciate the earlier meeting, so I, if it comes to a vote, I would be opposed to the vote at this time to go to 6:00. Thank you.
Mr. Benton?
I guess I'm out. I'd actually support it. I hate it for our staff that would have to stay late hours, but to be quite honest, it's confusing to me to figure out what days I'm supposed to be here at 6:00, and with everything going on with my family and several jobs, you can ask Nikki upstairs just about every time it gets close to a meeting I'm calling and ask her what time. So, that's, maybe I should have it better in my calendar, but I don't. And I have heard a number of my folks saying, my neighbors saying, that they could get to it a lot easier with a later date, especially the farming community. They're usually fairly late in the evening getting, doing their work, and it'd be a little easier for them to make it to the meetings and still get their work done.
Dr. Trampy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just think there's no way we're going to please everybody. When we used to have the public comment period only at 6:00, people would complain that we're halfway through our agenda by that point, and we've already covered what they wanted to talk about. So when we moved it to earlier, then they say, well, we can't get here by then. And not to bring up a sore subject, but when we had the meeting on the baseball stadium, I heard complaints afterwards that it went so late, and they were blaming us because we made statements at the top of the meeting, and they thought it was a strategy by us not to hear everyone, and we're not going to be able to please everyone. For my own selfish concerns, I don't like being here till midnight. Personally, I'd rather go back to the 3:00, but...
Any other discussion? Mr. Jakubowski?
Thank you. I think part of what was said at the last time was we were discussing the advertised tax rate, and it was being held at 4:30 when lots of people couldn't be here for such an important vote. And by the time we actually did vote on it, it was after 6:00, well after 6:00. And so I think that what we might think about doing is putting things that we know that are important, such as the tax rate and other items, further on in the agenda. My concern is that if you push it to 6:00, you know, we used to start at 2:00, then it moved to 3:00, and if you look at some of the northern counties, they actually go all day, and they break it up into two sessions, because typically, it was supposed to be that the first part of the meeting was a work session that we would have, and then after that would be public issues that we brought up in the evening. My concern would be then if we were to have a regular meeting with, let's just say, two or three or four public hearings, you know, you're going to have people, I mean, what do we then prioritize? Do we do the public hearings, or do we let them sit here while we hear public comment on whatever the issue might be? And so I think that what we're doing is compacting the time to a point where we're going to be irritating people on the other end. And I think the only solution to any of that would be either a Saturday meeting all day or one meeting every single Tuesday and Thursday to try to get all of the work that we have done. So I would prefer Mr. Trampy to go back to a 3:00 also, but I would definitely not want to go to 6:00.
Mr. McLaughlin?
So I just want to point out, because a lot of constituents do come and other residents or citizens come up and complain that all the business that's conducted between 4:30 and 6:00, they don't get a chance to make any discussion on, because there is, some things are important to other people besides the tax rate. There's other issues that go on the county, and they feel like they're not, they're getting left out of the discussion. So that's why I think it, I don't think it hurts us to start at 6:00. You know, very few of our meetings go past 11:00. In worst case, if you've got that much work on the agenda for a given month, we can always put a special meeting in, in any day of that week, that month, to accommodate too much work. But right now, I think we're, you know, as it's been said a number of times, planning District 16, 60% of our workforce commutes outside the county. That means they've got to commute back in. So I think we're doing a disservice to our citizens by having these early meetings, because you just, if you work up north, you can't get here by 4:30. So, this is my last statement.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chair?
And I'll bring up the point of order. So I will bring a point of order. This would be a change to our bylaws. So the first meeting we have during the year, it's a simple majority to change our bylaws, but tonight, after the first meeting, it's a two-thirds majority, which means to pass it needs five votes. This is a point of order.
Yeah, also, what we need to do is prepare a resolution also, so that can be advertised for that change. So I would, of course, recommend if we do make the change, we're happy to draft everything before we can come back, but to give us enough time to do that if that's the desire.
Okay. Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a comment to Mr. Jakubowski said, and I think what we can do to help is let the county administrator sort of decide what is, you know, I'm not saying there's more important things in it, but there are. As you say, there's issues that we think that the public would really like to state on, then maybe we can move them back and talk about, you know, the presentations and stuff that really, just for this board decided we're going to do, that really public, I know they should have comments, but some things we have to decide among ourselves. And so I'd rather say, let's, you know, like with the other ones, 3:00 meant good, but I'm satisfied with 4:30, because that was a compromise, and I think that's how you get things done. And I would say that, you know, if there's an important issue coming up, we should be able to tell the county administrator or the chairman through the chair. Excuse me, sir, I apologize. That he could arrange it that way. I think he knows what we all want.
Any other discussion? Mr. Sebula?
Yeah, just a final comment. I know I said the people don't like to drive the back roads and so forth, but I think what we've done in the past with the 3:00 and the 6:00 is provide the flexibility for our residents who can come early and who can come late. And I think that's the key to county government, is provide some flexibility that satisfies all of the residents, not just partly of them. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we will call the question.
Three, yes, with Mr. Jakubowski, Mr. Sebula, Dr. Trampy, and Mr. Skinner voting no.
Okay, and the chair has no board reports.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to a public hearing, CA 17-002. This is ordinance number 23-168 concerning amendments to the historic overlay district Good evening, Jacob Pestwick.
Tonight's public hearing is for proposed amendments to the historic overlay district. Just off the bat, in terms of recommendation, the planning commission on February 15th, 2017, saw this proposal in front of them, and they recommended approval with a vote of 7-0. Staff, after consulting with the historic preservation commission, also recommends that the board of supervisors approve this case this evening. I have a fairly brief overview of the proposed amendments this evening. First of all, they are in the zoning ordinance specifically. This is part of the ongoing update to the county zoning ordinance that we've all been going through over the last year or so. The section specifically is this overlay district located in the overlay district section of the zoning ordinance. Overwhelmingly, the proposed amendment is a cleanup amendment, and again, as I had stated earlier, this has been vetted by the historic preservation commission with their support. As of 2016, we took it through them. So the specific amendments before you this evening, first of all, the purpose statement of the historic overlay district as it is. Staff has proposed a modification to providing incentives for the upkeep and rehabilitation of older structures as a purpose and function of the historic overlay district. The proposal would add encouragement for rehabilitation efforts through alternative means. Again, this is a purpose statement. It's, it doesn't hold a lot of weight, but in consultation with the historic preservation commission, they felt instead of just saying the county, one of the purposes is that it's going to provide incentives, they recognized the fact that there are alternative means to potentially promote rehabilitation historic structures. One of those, as an example, would be the elimination recently of review fees for certificates of appropriateness within historic overlay district. Another thing that we had taken through a little while ago, more countywide initiative, was to expand some of the allowable uses, such as bed and breakfasts in rural areas and some of the different districts, as opposed to requiring a special use permit, taking that extra burden of process out and potentially promoting rehabilitation of older structures for a bed and breakfast business, for instance. So that's ultimately what that proposal, there is no commitments being made within this particular change. Again, it just expands the options. Secondly, we've corrected references to the Code of Virginia in Section 23732. There was an outdated reference in there. Many of these sections of the historic overlay district were written back in many years ago, so it's time for an update. The Code of Virginia has changed in some instances. We've also added Code of Virginia references in Section 23735, and we've redirected historic overlay district review processes and coordination with the historic preservation commission to the planning director instead of the zoning administrator. The planning department, planning director are basically the staff liaisons with the historic preservation commission, and this properly directs those roles. There's also capitalization throughout for formatting. We've been doing that as an ongoing process as we update the zoning ordinance. And with that, I'll take any question we have. Thank you.
The board have any questions? Mr. Skinner?
Jacob, could you, how did this all come about? Do you have a history for us? I mean, what brought this to the county's attention?
Well, there's a couple of things. We've had, one of the comprehensive plan goals is to review and update the county's zoning ordinance and different development regulations, design standards, manual subdivision ordinance. And as part of that comprehensive plan goal, and we've been going through section by section of the county zoning ordinance, reviewing and updating it, getting it, you know, more brought into the current. We've had directions from the board in the past also to look at permitted and special uses, for instance, to see where there was opportunities to expand allowable uses, become more flexible, more in tune with current conditions, and more business friendly as well. So this is really just an ongoing effort to get through the zoning ordinance and update it.
So tonight, you're asking us to approve, or just to go forward with it and look forward into what we can change?
This is a public hearing this evening. We're looking for approval of the draft amendments as proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll now open the public hearing. Amy, has anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Is there anyone that's not signed up to speak that would like to speak at this We'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion with the board? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, any discussion? Call the question.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I may make a comment, Jacob's here tonight representing staff, and I was just reminded of back in 2011, when I was a resident of Spotsylvania County and had some questions of staff, I came in here and asked them of Jacob. I didn't, I don't even quite know how I ended up at his disposal, but I was just impressed then, I'm impressed now. He answered all my questions professionally, just as a regular Spotsylvania County resident. There was no hindrance in getting that information to me, no incumbents coming at me at that time either, wondering why I was there, and I just appreciate the transparency of our staff and your professionalism too, Jacob. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Next item is presentation also from planning. This is on a resolution to initiate a zoning ordinance amendment regarding vehicle sales, rentals, and ancillary service establishments, and Wanda Parrish is here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The item before you this evening is a staff report. Mr. Sebula had raised this issue in the past, having to do with the number of used car sales establishments that are popping up, especially along the Route 1 corridor, and concerns related to those. The vehicle sales is a permitted use in Commercial 3, Industrial 1, and Industrial 2 zoning. We looked over the past five years, and while it may seem that there's been an increase in the number of these establishments in the county, what we found is that it's actually been fairly steady over the years, but I think it's the cumulative effect. But over the past five years, we have averaged about 31.6 new dealerships within the county. Some of the concerns that have been raised are related to the number of non-conforming zoned sites where these are located. Within Commercial 3 District, Industrial 1, and Industrial 2, there are properties that were zoned, commercial, industrial, in the past. They are non-conforming sites. They do not meet current development standards, but because this is a permitted use, they are able to move in without upgrades to the site. Safe access to the site is one of the major concerns that has been brought up. A sufficient area for loading and unloading vehicles. I've heard of instances where the semi-truck sized vehicle transports are pulling off on the side of Route 1, unloading vehicles there onto the sites. And sufficient area for the display of the vehicles. They're often being displayed on grass, in drive aisles, so that when you pull into a site, there's very little room for a customer to actually figure out where to drive and where to park. So as you can tell, these issues really would be most relevant on a smaller site. So what we are proposing is to look at these smaller sites, establish a minimum lot size for vehicle sales within Commercial 3, Industrial 1, and Industrial 2. And if your property is below that lot size, then a special use would be required. If the property is above that lot size, then a special use would not be required. The map before you right now is just an image that shows our current industrial and commercial 3 zone properties, and you can see that right along the Route 1 corridor, in particular, we have a lot of the Commercial 3 properties. So we feel that if we target the smaller sized parcels, then this would address these issues, these safety concerns that have been brought up. So if the board does wish for staff to proceed to develop a code amendment to the zoning ordinance, to establish a minimum lot size for permitted vehicle sales establishments, and under that lot size, they would be required to have a special use. And we'd also look to establish some development standards along with that to address these specific items of concern. If the board does wish to proceed, there is a resolution that's included in your packets. What would happen is staff would go back to the drawing board, develop the ordinance amendment, and bring it back to the board for another look before it moves forward to public hearing. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. McLaughlin?
When you talk minimum lot size, what size are we talking about?
Well, it would probably be around four or five acres.
So are we then kind of hurting small businesses by saying you can't, you've got to have at least four or five acres in a, essentially in a commercial area, because that's where they're going to do the business? It's really going to put a lot of people with no ability to open a new small business.
It would add process, definitely would, because they would be required to come through that special use, and there are the fees associated with that.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that you look at it, an acre of land in Spotsylvania commercial is probably half a million or more per acre, so if you're putting a lot of businesses they wouldn't be able to open, and then plus the inventory and all, everything that goes with it, so. Have there been a lot of issues? I mean, as far as we have, some statistics that show there've been this many accidents or this many complaints based on our...
I don't have that information this evening. I would have to check with zoning to see what complaints they get. I know that we've heard the issue raised at the board level, and also from the planning commission, they've raised concerns about these. So anecdotally, there have been complaints, but I don't have any statistics related to that.
So we don't have specific people that were making the complaints, just in general?
General observations, yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Sebula?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. McLaughlin, part of the problem is, two years ago, we had approximately five used car lots between Massaponix and the county line down south. Now there are 19. And of those 19, they all come up with a multiple flagging, all of the gaudy. It's making Route 1 in that area look like a trash bin, and that's not good for economic development in the county. As far as small businesses are concerned, you've got to comply with the ordinances, and what we're suggesting here is a little bit more restriction. It's not preventing them from doing the business. It's controlling it to the point where environmental is being considered, safety is being considered, all of the visual distractions are being considered. So I asked staff to do this, to come up with a resolution so we could move forward. This isn't final. I would like to see it move forward and to see staff continue to put this together moving forward to public hearings and ordinances, so therefore, I would motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, sir. First of all, I think one of the things I see out there are the parking requirements. Under, you know, under the current ordinance, we really don't have any parking requirements for this, do we?
We do. We do, but the problem is, is that with these non-conforming uses, we don't even get to the stage where we have a site plan in order to review. They are able to move in with a zoning use permit on the existing site.
And I can tell you, one out at Thornburg, just past the intersection, you can't park inside there and see a car. I mean, it's, you either park on the street. I think it's something that we need to control a little bit better. The other thing is, when we talk about that many acres, when you saw how small, the thing most of these people are doing are renting the land, they're not buying the land out there, because if they don't make success in a year or so, then they're out of there. Okay? And I think it's important that, you know, we find some solution in between. You said minimum acres of five acres, or four to five acres is what they're on, or... Because I don't know how many other, the big green, yellow down in my section, that, you know, it's a junkyard, you know, basically, but it's well hidden, believe it or not, for how many cars are back there. But I'm in favor, at least going forward and looking how we can make this a little bit better, because... bit better, because we have a lot of them. I think when you're coming up Route 1, there is a first impression, just like you do when you're coming down Route 3, I believe, you want the first impression that, you know, Spotsy's a, a clean county and stuff of that nature, and not just set up by a lot of used car dealerships. So I would certainly be in favor of looking, going forward with this and looking at and see what we can come up with as maybe a, like I said, a compromise between worst and the best, some of that nature. Thank you.
Mr. Benton.
The, now, the ones that are currently there would be grandfathered, correct?
Well, they would become non-conforming uses at that point, so if they wish to expand, they would then need to come in for the special use if they are under that acreage threshold. If they're above whatever acreage threshold is established, then they would continue to be a permitted use.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with that at all, and, I mean, we can move forward, definitely maybe some regulations on some signage and stuff like that, like we have on, on just about everything else, but I'm not gonna cause these people to come back before the board when they've done everything legally from the get-go. You know, and I, I think some of them would probably take offense to us saying how gaudy and everything, you know, they're trying to conduct a business and trying to get people in to, to do their business, whether we like it or not. And that's, that's my concern. I, I don't know, I would not support anything with acreage restrictions and stuff like that. Keeping them off the roads, yes, and keeping the entrances cleared, safety issues, and maybe restricting some of the signage and that could be distracting the folks, yeah, I'd definitely, I'd, I'd be in support of that, but no, not causing people to come back forward when they've been through the process from the get-go, won't support it.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Just one more thing, so, and it was kind of brought up, Mr. Sebula brought up the signs and stuff, but we already have ordinances restricting what type of signs you can place on your property, correct?
Correct.
So I guess the question is, are we enforcing all of the existing rules, and do we need to do that first before we change the whole ordinance?
Well, with the signs, they would need be, excuse me, they would need to get a sign permit, and, but our zoning department enforces on complaint, so there's not sufficient staff to be proactive to go out and canvass the counties, so it is complaint-based. So really, the complaint needs to come in before they'll go out and, and address that signage, so.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Jakobowski.
We just passed a special use permit for a used car dealership in the Salem District at the corner of Route 1 and Harris, or I'm sorry, Levels.
Correct.
And that had restrictions on it. And granted, that was not C-3, that was C-1, I think it was, or C-2?
Yes, it, it was actually a residential zone, but it was part of a planned unit development.
Okay, so I, I think that we could use that maybe as, because I think that turned out well. I don't, I don't think that there's an intention to bankrupt anybody or turn anybody out, but we do have zoning laws, and I'm not sure if the C-3 zone was ever envisioned to be used car dealerships. And, and I know lots of people are fond of saying, in my district, well, in my district, you will see a lot of this, and does it look trashy? Oh, yeah, it does. I, I invite you to come down and take a look. A lot of them need to go, a lot of them are, they just pop up, and, and, you know, if, if we constantly, or not constantly, but if we do not have a, a baseline of what we're doing, it's going to continually expand. And if you take a look at the Route 1 corridor, you would go up to, you know, Prince William, let's say, and a lot of those old shopping center areas that turn, that kind of got run down, well, they're investing a lot of money into rehabbing those areas because of the first impressions that you get when you go into the counties. You know, we took a look at the Route 1 corridor going north, and we have a lot of, you know, broken down and, and older gas stations and hotels and things that need to be revamped. You know, it's, it's not about somebody trying to start a business and, and do well, and we're encouraging that, but it's also the impression that we give of what our community is. And I don't want to be restrictive to the point of bankrupting people and turning people out, but I also do think that the, that we do need to find a, a nice minimum or, or medium that we can use, and I think that that SUP that we did a few months ago, it, it kept cars off the grass, it kept a, a minimum number of cars that they could even keep in the property. So I think something like that might be something that we could work out, but I would like to see it go forward and see what plays out from staff and, and when it's brought back, and then we can have a final vote. This is just to move the idea forward. Thank you.
All right, I have a couple of questions. You said, on average, 31.6 new in the past five years. How many moved out? How many went down and out of business?
I don't know the answer to that one. I'd have to look into that.
Gotcha.
Well, I think, my opinion is, these are already commercially zoned and industrial zoned, and I cannot, I'm with Mr. Benton here, free markets should drive this, we've already got our commercial and industrial zone, it's not residential zone. If we did have something like this in a residential zoned area, we would have to go through a special use permit process again, so. Without any more discussion, we'll have a call to question?
Call the question.
Five, yes, with Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Ross voting no.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Wanda.
Mr. Chairman, board members, that brings us to our work session on the budget. Good evening, Bonnie and team.
Our presentation this evening, or our portion of the presentation this evening is pretty quick and straightforward, we just have a few updates for you, and I want to go through those now. We'll start with the revenues first and then talk about the expenses. When we last, had our last work session on the 16th, we left off with total revenue adjustments through this process of $187,000, and since then, we've taken a look at revenues through the beginning of March for fiscal year 17, and as a result of that analysis, we feel comfortable increasing the estimates of revenues for certain revenues for fiscal year 18. Those being what's listed here, the sales tax update for fiscal year 18 is $408,000, recordation tax update, it's an increase of $100,000, meals tax, an increase of $153,000, recycling revenue, an increase of $85,000, planning publication sales, an increase of $381. Sale of surplus is actually a decrease of $50,000, and just for those who aren't aware, the sale of surplus is if we have a vehicle that is being replaced, and that vehicle that's being replaced now becomes surplus, there are certain regulations and guidelines we have to follow to dispose of that asset, and that is our sale of surplus. I also went back and looked at some recently approved incentive agreements and wanted to make sure that we had in the fiscal year 18 budget, the dollars associated with those incentives, and one of them necessitates me increasing the B-Pole revenue by about $19,000 for a new business that's expected to come into the county. And then also, we have a couple of uses of the fund balance, the $2 million Economic Opportunities Reserve for incentives, we want to use $110,000 of that for already approved incentives in fiscal year 18. All of those revenue adjustments that I just went through, to include the revenue adjustments that we have given you in previous meetings, total $1,012,576. On the expense side, adjustments that had already been made and reported to you through the 16th of March were savings of $299,329. To that, we need to increase the transfer to the Economic Development Opportunities Fund for the incentives that I just talked about on the revenue side. Those combined incentives, you can see there, are $129,000 in expenditures, and also, at Mr. Benton's request, I have a line item on here to reduce the contribution to the Lake Inn Advisory Committee by $900. Those total general fund expenditure adjustments are a savings of $171,229. Pulling everything together, the data that I just reported to you for revenues and expenditures is a total general fund impact of $1,183,000, showing there the first red text line, and then if we add that $1,183,000 to the original $92,000 that we reported to you as being available when the recommended budget was initially recommended, the total general fund available as of March 30th, 2017, is $1,276,766. And I'm certain we'll come back and you'll want to ask questions and have a discussion about the $1,276,000, but in terms of the next steps in the budget process, we have two more budget work sessions currently scheduled for next week, one on the 4th, one on the 6th, and then the following week, on April 11th, that's Tuesday, you are set to adopt the fiscal year 18 budget and the 2017 tax rates, and the final approval of the fiscal year 18 through '22 CIP as well. So with that, we'll answer whatever questions that you might have.
Are there any questions from the board? Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, real quick, you said in the use of the fund balance for the economic reserve, $110,000?
Yes. Yes, we have the, one of the policy level reserves is Economic Opportunities Reserve of $2 million.
Right.
The board has already approved several incentive agreements that will begin paying out one-time incentives in fiscal year 18, so we are proposing that we use 110,000 of that 2 million to pay those one-time incentives.
So that's, that's my, the 129,000 of the other two incentives?
Yes, I'm sorry, if, on the previous page, the B-Pole is incentive-related, it's $19,000. Those two combined is the $129,000.
Okay, and that 129 is gonna come out of that existing fund?
110 of the 129 is coming out of the existing fund, 19,000 is net new B-Pole revenues that will be reimbursed.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Catch Carl by surprise?
Or maybe we missed the opportunity to catch Carl. We are ready for closed session, if I can see where he's got that resolution hiding in this book. Ah, yes, resolution to adjourn and close meeting. Wait, I see him now. Carl, it's all up to you.
Apologize, I was quicker than I thought. Close session, right? Yes, sir. All right. This will be a resolution to adjourn and the closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn and close meeting for discussion and consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or for the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically discussion of real property in the Lee's Hills District, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711A3, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
All right, call the question.
Yep, this is our return to open meeting resolution, whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted and conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion convened in closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Dr. Trampi.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Sebula.
Aye.
Mr. Jakobowski.
Aye.
The chair's aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Call the question.
Next board meeting is Tuesday, April 4th at 6:00 PM.